Well, let's get the show on the road then.
Sorry.
No, there we go. Okay, well, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners, held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is July 8th, 2020. Due to social distancing guidelines and regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on gatherings of 25 or more people, this meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conferencing platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who placed themselves at harm's way in order to help preserve our safety and at home and overseas. Okay, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. All right, we have, I think, all of our board members and our solicitor Jim Garrity and there are those substitute professionals. And I will make a general announcement. I will announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on July 1st, 2020 for the purposes of interviewing police promotional candidates, as well as on July 6th, 2020, as a part of the regularly scheduled workshop meeting held on that date to discuss one personnel matter and one potential litigation matter. Next, I'm going to read you a statement concerning the COVID-19 situation as it applies to our township. It's a little bit long here, so bear with me. On June 26th, 2020, Springfield Township joined its neighboring communities in easing COVID-related regulations as Montgomery County transitioned onto the green phase of Governor Wolf's reopening plan for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. In accordance with the green phase of Springfield Township's return-to-work plan, the following changes to township services have been put into effect starting on June 29th, 2020. The Township Administration Police Building and the Free Library of Springfield Township are now open to the public. Accommodations have been made to safeguard public health and the well-being of the staff. We ask that visitors to any township facility wear a face mask while in the building to help prevent the spread of the COVID virus. The library will operate under the summer hours with all meeting rooms and seating areas closed until further notice. Use of public computers is available by pre-registration and is limited to no more than 45 minutes. Residents with borrowed books that need to be returned should return them to the library before July 15th to avoid late fees. Please check the library page on the township website for details. All public playgrounds, athletic fields, trails, restrooms, and fishing areas in our parks have also been reopened. Outdoor field permits will be considered with restrictions on the total number of people per field and facility. The recreation center has reopened for township programming only. Rentals of the recreation center are still prohibited until further notice. Despite numerous township facilities and operations returning to normal, all Board of Commissioners and Advisory Board meetings will continue to be held virtually using the Zoom virtual conferencing platform. This decision was made out of an abundance of caution for the public health, as well as the Board's desire to ensure that public gathering restrictions do not unintentionally inhibit the ability of any member of the community to participate in a township meeting. The move to the green phase of the governor's reopening plan marks a positive step in our pursuit to return to some semblance of normalcy. Yet, as the restrictions put in place to protect us all are relaxed, the Board believes it is more important than every new exercise caution adhere to public health guidelines issued by local, state, and federal agencies. Social distancing and wearing face masks when out in the public are two simple ways to help prevent the spread of this disease. No one wants to get back to the severe restrictions that were in place this past spring. By working together and adhering to the guidelines issued by public health officials, we can progress beyond the green phase and hopefully see the removal of all restrictions in the very near future. So that's that. And now we are going to go to the public portion of the meeting. And as part of the advertising for tonight's business meeting, an effort was made to solicit public comment in advance of the meeting. Public comment was accepted via email up to 5:00 PM this evening. And as far as I know, we did not receive any comments of that nature. So the Board is now also open to comments or questions from the public, and that would be from anybody who's joined us on Zoom. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. So. Are there any questions or comments?
And Mr. President, if I could, once again, we do have a few more people that joined us. If a member of the public would like to make public comment, we encourage you to use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom, which can be found at the bottom of your Zoom menu, or by clicking Participants. And at the bottom of the pop-up screen on the right-hand sign, there is the Raise Your Hand button as well.
Okay, great. And I see in the audience, Shantia, is it Shantia McCoy Jones or Jones McCoy? I can't remember your... She's muted.
I will unmute her.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Fontaine, right?
So, yeah.
Hello, yes, hi.
Hi, so I talked to you last night, and you had some questions about the Lloyd Estate, and we're now prepared to answer those questions if you want to ask those questions. If you want, or I could just sort of summarize, I think basically what you were asking was, you know, kind of the status and how we are going to sort of let the public know what's going on as we continue with that project. So I got together with our township manager, Mike Taylor, and if I'll just turn it over to Mike for a minute or two, and he can kind of tell us where we are with that.
I also talked to your other colleague today. Oh, God, I forgot his name that fast.
Mark.
Mark, thank you, Mark.
Oh, Mark.
All right, so if you spoke with Mark, do you have any additional questions?
No, no, he was, for those who are unaware of what my comments were, yes, on our yesterday's call, I asked specific questions related to that estate that is off of Willagrove Avenue right at New Bolt Lane. And my questions were related to the work that was going to start, that had started on the property. I saw that there were trees that had already been removed, and part of the estate building had also been removed. And my questions were related to with such, with a development that is coming into our area, and one exit point currently out of that development that's planning to be developed. I know right now it's on hold because it hasn't been officially, it hasn't been officially sold yet, and they have to come back to the planning committee, commission anyway, for specific approval. So Mark did explain all that information to me. My question was, how does a township inform the residents of that type, of a development of that size coming into our area? I asked that question because if you're unaware of what that plan was, 32 homes, three-car garage, there's one exit and entry off of that specific street that then comes into New Bolt Lane, which would be an increase in traffic coming down New Bolt, either going to the left or right. And for those of our neighbors who aren't aware of the planning commission meetings relating to this topic, it's going to be quite shocking when all of a sudden they see this new development being built behind their homes, because it is quite close to people's homes. I mean, you can literally see where they're build, where they're going to be building it. So that was one, that was my overall question related to that. And just a general question in general, I mean, it does, it will have an impact in our area. It will have an impact in our community, in the neighbors in my community, including, of course, including myself.
Sure, so I can let you know that that subdivision which has been approved, and was approved in 2018, started the planning process in 2017 in October. And at that time, they would have appeared in front of the planning commission on several occasions in order to work out some of those details that you saw occurring last evening. And as part of that process, we notify all of the residents within 500 feet of the proposed development of those upcoming meetings. We'll do it the first time, and then we expect people to show up at the meetings and, you know, keep themselves informed afterwards.
And how do, and how do you notify them? Because I never received any notification of that. I received the notification when they had their first original meeting, which I was very thankful that you guys had sent us. Back in 2017, I received a meeting notice, but I hadn't received anything since that time.
If I may, Mike, I can kind of answer that.
Hi, Mr. Graham.
Hello, how are you? We did send out notices, Shante. You need, I don't know if your email is on my email list, but if you can send that to me. We had several meetings with the residents on Cobden, New Bolt, and we had them back at the home of, oh my God, I can't think of his name right now. Can't think of his name, but we had them. His house is actually right behind the Lloyd Park Estate.
The Harkins?
Several meetings back there concerning, you know, a couple of years ago when we, when it was really in the forefront.
Yeah.
Nothing had been happening as of late until today, but if you send me your email address, I will make sure that any conversation concerning it, you will be included on that moving forward.
Okay, let me just correct. There was nothing happening yesterday. I was just, I was on the calls with the other commissioners and some other calls yesterday related to the township. So that was, yeah. So thank you for that.
Forward, usually if something happens, I usually reach Michael, that's right, Michael and Mary. We had, we had several meetings in their home. They were nice enough to open their homes when we thought that some of the project was going to be on the Springfield Township side.
I'm a little bit around, I'm right at, pretty much at the corner of Cobden and New Bolt. So, but I will reach out to you. I do have your email address. I did call you today also. So I'll reach out to you. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
I did.
Dude, I think she's muted again. Did she say something?
I was premature in the mute. Sorry, Shante.
I think it's unmuted.
He's still muted.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Oh, no problem. I saw online the very wonderful statement that the commissioners had written related to the civil, the civil issues that we were dealing with in our community. And so I wanted to say thank you for that, that well-written and well-expressed sincere wording from our commissioners. However, my question is, now that, you know, we're continuing to move forward, there's a lot of things that are still happening related to racial injustice and disparities in the community around us. Has it, and you might have addressed this on other, on other calls or so forth. If I looked at the minutes, I didn't see anything, but my question is, how is the township planning to address that? And overall, are they planning to add it to a strategic plan? Are they talking about the relationship between the community and our, and the Springfield Township Police? What is the plan of the township? Because as we continue to have varied conversations across this country related to race and disparities at different levels, from our children to us adults, as just citizens of the United States, how are we going to address that within our community? And I'll give you an example. When all the civil, when everything was happening in Cedarburg Park, Cedarbrook Mar Plaza, and all the destruction was happening and so forth, I had a concern. Of course, my husband was not concerned as I was. However, but I had a concern about the level of police presence that was in our township at that time. Even though, you know, it's a different, a little distance, but we all know that it's only down the street technically. And if things had shifted and people came a little bit left, then they would have been in our township. And I know that our police was addressing and supporting the community related to what was occurring. However, as you move forward, what is your plan to address that? I know last year we had some racial slurs that were left on people's properties. And so what, we received that, that happened last year. Has there been a plan that moves forward, especially where the climate in which we're in right now?
Well, so first of all, I...
I can look at it if you want to, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, Shante, you have to give me your email address. As you know, we had a, well, I had, I sponsored a rally with the Multicultural Parents Association to address, first of all, the disparaging remarks made by Commissioner Gail, and to also address the current issues that are happening nationwide. As a result of that rally, we had a sign-up sheet, I don't know if you made it to there, to that rally that was held in Cisco Park about three weeks ago now. We had a sign-up sheet, and we are actually mobilizing in order to address those issues. Our first concerns, we have a youth leadership commission, a committee. I was focusing my attention toward the youth initially. We have that group there up and running. As a matter of fact, they addressed the school board meeting last night via Zoom. So now that they are kind of up and running, and they just, they need very little mentoring from myself, we have also, we're going to be sending out notices next week because we're going to start a coalition addressing those issues. And the three main prongs of our focus is going to be governmental, these police departments, and also the school districts. So once again, if you send me those email addresses, I'll show you how we are addressing those issues moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think she's muted again.
Yeah, she's muted, yeah. Someone.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I will definitely follow up. I'm a nurse. I'm in the middle of COVID. I actually have come up for air for the first time in two months, and I'm getting ready to go back deep. So that's, and you can, and I'm at the VA, so I've already shared it with some of my colleagues, I mean, some of your colleagues. So I definitely will follow up with you because of my, you know, my concerns and my questions. So thank you. One other question. Related, related to COVID-19, has the, just a suggestion, I don't know if you developed this, has the township thought about, or have you already developed, like, a quick tips for surviving COVID-19? And I'll give, such as, I'll give you an example. Like, when you wear a face mask, when we wear a face mask at the hospital, we store our face masks in a brown paper bag. I actually have one in my office, one in my car, and one, you know, in my, in my home. And when you take it off, you know, there's instructions on how to take it off, your mask off, you drop it in the bag, you never hang it on the windshield, and so forth. So it might be, you know, kind of community, like, maybe something that we can develop as a community that we can share on our township page, just some quick tips, or even a link to the CDC's website, some of their resources that they developed, just to kind of support our, like, a one-stop-shop for COVID-19 information. I know things are changing, but some of the things are pretty much the same, like hand washing and so forth. So we can have a whole, a whole bunch of our neighbors wearing masks. However, if they don't know how to safely wear a mask, it doesn't matter if they wear a mask, or if they, they do or they don't. But just a thought.
No, good idea. I'm told every day I'm not doing it properly, so you know.
All right, that was just, all right, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Shante.
Mr. President, if I could address, Shante, we do have a COVID-19 resources page on the website, which is designed to be a one-stop shop, so to speak, with information for the school district, for businesses, and it disseminates a lot of the county information.
Good, yeah. If we all can find that, that'd be very helpful.
And thank you, Shante, for being on the front lines.
Yeah, really.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to, just to pick up on Brandon's point, if you do go to the website right now, if you, right on the homepage, the three big banners are for the COVID crisis, spotted lanternflies, and there's a pertinent one, the census, but all with, I think, great information and a lot of very, very good stuff. And then I also wanted to add one other point. As we had discussions with the police department last week, and which we emphasized that we wanted to sort of continue the community discussions that we've had over the last couple of years with the Community Watch Program and the opioid crisis. We've had a couple of opportunities to have the community come together with the police department for very open discussions that have really, I think, been very fruitful. As we work through the best way to do that with Zoom, and if maybe the opportunity in the near future to do something in a more physical environment, that might be a little bit better suited for that kind of discussion, but we all agreed that that's something that we really would like to continue, to give the community and residents an opportunity to hear from the police department and vice versa, as we continue those conversations.
Yep. And I'll also say that, you know, we, I think I mentioned a few minutes ago that we interviewed a number of our policemen, police people, police force for promotional, we basically are promoting three of our police force to hire, hire officers' status. Our lieutenant retired, and we are promoting one of our sergeants to that position, then we're moving a corporal up to sergeant position, then patrolman up to corporal. And for each of those positions, you have to, we have to interview three. So we had to actually interview, we had, we had nine interviews for all of those, and that's a hefty chunk of our police force. So through the course of that, plus all the other interviews we do over the course of the year, we, we get a chance to get to know our policemen very well, just through these interview processes. And, and we also have the, you know, you know, have a cup of coffee with the cops and all that. And, you know, it's a really great opportunity for us to get to know our police force, you know, on a one-on-one basis. So I just say that. And I don't, not sure that every community gets a chance to do that, certainly not in the city of Philadelphia and some of the larger townships around here, I don't think. So, anyway. Okay, any more questions? Well, you'll get your chance at the end of the meeting if you have anything else. So let's move on to, let's see, we'll move on to the, to our committee reports. And I have two items. The first one concerns 225 Northwestern Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated April 17th, 2020, from Ahmet Azulay, sole member of the president of 225 Northwestern LLC, extending the 90-day subdivision land development review period without limitations as to time for the project known as the 225 Northwestern Avenue Preliminary Final Land Development Plan. The extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise its land development plans to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. And that is my motion. Do I hear a second? Second, second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second.
Okay. Okay, I think we have a unanimous vote there. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. Next, we have, the Planning Commission, undercover letter of June 19th, 2020, Michael Bruce announced his resignation from the Springfield Township Planning Commission effective immediately. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I wish to thank Mr. Bruce for his service to the Springfield Township community. As a result of Mr. Bruce's resignation, therefore presently exists a vacancy on the Planning Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Gerald Quill of Windmore to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. The unexpired term of service shall expire on February 16th, 2024. I think I saw Jerry in the audience here. So anyway, that's my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Standing aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay. And that concludes my report. And we will now move on to, let's see, the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Jeffrey Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item three is the July bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the June check reconciliation, the amount of $432,629.90. In the July bill listing, the amount of $1,130,533.20. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next is item four, the Finance Director. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of Weasner Consulting LLC to serve as the township's transitional and interim finance director in accordance with his letter of engagement dated June 26th, 2020. Mr. Weasner's services are necessary due to the retirement of the township's current finance director on September 11th, 2020. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Second, second, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And finally, I have an announcement on the Library Advisory Committee. Upon cover letter of June 19th, 2020, Michael Bruce announced his resignation from the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee effective immediately. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I wish to thank Mr. Bruce for his contributions to the Springfield Township community. As a result of Mr. Bruce's resignation, there presently exists a vacancy on the Library Advisory Committee. Members of the Library Advisory Committee serve in advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners on the overall philosophy and goals of the Free Library of Springfield Township, and is a sounding board for the library needs of Springfield Township residents. If you are interested in serving on the Library Advisory Committee or any other advisory boards or commissions, the Board of Commissioners would like to hear from you. Please forward a letter of interest to resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA 19038, or M. Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R, at SpringfieldMontco.org in order to be considered for an appointment. That concludes that announcement, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Okay, next we will hear from the Chairman of our Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report on recycling and a motion on energy resilience plan. The recycling during the month of June 2020, Springfield Township residents recycled 199.61 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 84.8%. The net cost for the month was $26,463.90. I motion, I have a motion regarding the energy resilience plan. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the township, township's participation in the 2020 Clean Energy Planning for Prosperity and Resilience Program in order to support the development of a clean energy transition plan for Springfield Township. Cost of the program is $50 and includes an intensive 12-week training program that will be attended by representatives of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay.
That concludes my report and motions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. The first one is concerning Resolution Number 11498. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1498, a resolution authorizing a grant application to be submitted to the Montgomery County Township Program for the project known as the Walnut Avenue Walkway/Pedestrian Trail. If funded, the project seeks to construct a pedestrian trail on the south side of Walnut Avenue from Orland Mill Road to Sandy Run Park. The estimate of the project is $245,022. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? No questions, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And my second motion is I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1499, a resolution authoring a grant application to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Grant Program for the project known as the Cisco Park Improvement Project. If funded, the project seeks to construct a new playground and recreational pavilion at Cisco Park in Erdine. The estimated cost, the estimated cost of the project is $256,536. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have any questions on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item I have this evening is handicap parking space. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Section 107-35 Schedule 12 Special Purpose Parking Zones in order to establish a handicap parking space on the south side of Mermaid Lane, her remote point 287 feet west of its intersection with Queen Street to a point 20 feet thereof. That is my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can I hear me?
Yeah, you're a little slow, but, you know, this is concerning handicap, a handicap parking space out on Mermaid Lane, if anybody's interested, so. Okay, all opposed, nay. No nays, so please record a unanimous vote. Thank you, okay. Next.
Next item is Police Service Service Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners rip point ever each Ted Bell to a new six-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Police Civil Service Commission. New six-year term of service shall expire July 16th, 2026. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? We were reappointing Ted Bell to a new six-year term of service for the Springfield Township Police Service Commission on that one, so. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. No nays, okay, please record a unanimous vote. Mike, hey, Mike, you want me to read this because you're sort of breaking up? Is that all right? Let me read this because Mike's sort of breaking up here. Mark Perry was also due to be reappointed to a new six-year term of service as a member of the Civil Service Commission. However, Mr. Perry was indicated that his professional and personal obligations will prevent him from continuing as a member and has declined the Board's invitation to be reappointed. On behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, I wish to thank Mark for volunteering his time and talents to the Springfield Township community as a township commissioner, and more recently as a volunteer member of the Civil Service Commission. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners appoint Glenn A. Schaum to a new six-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Police Service Commission. A new six-year term of service shall be effective July 17th, 2020, and shall expire July 16th, 2026. That is my motion, or Commissioner Maxwell's motion, I should say. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All, any questions on that motion? And as we all know, Commissioner Schaum has been a, I think you served on the Board of Commissioners for 20 years or so. So, welcome back, Commissioner Schaum. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Aye.
All right. And, let's see. Mike, can you continue with this?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead, let's see.
Can you hear me?
You're sort of breaking up, and you're a little on the, you're breaking up a little bit.
Aye.
Mike, get ready your picture and try it. Stop your video.
Yeah, stop your video, try that now, yeah.
Fireworks legislation.
That's good, it's perfect. Yep.
Your face was breaking.
Okay. Pennsylvania Act 43 of 2017 authorized the sale and use of certain consumer-grade fireworks by adults. The law preempts municipal authority to regulate fireworks at the local level. Since enactment, public safety personnel have reported a significant increase in fireworks-related incidents and injuries, as well as significant constituent complaints. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a letter to the Pennsylvania General Assembly requesting an amendment to the present law in order to permit local municipalities to regulate the sale and use of consumer-grade fireworks. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Any questions? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. Next item is Police Promotions. Earlier this year, Lieutenant Lee Allen retired from the Springfield Township Police Department after 30 years of distinguished service to the community. As a result of Lieutenant Allen's retirement, there are presently, presently exists a vacancy as a police lieutenant. Before I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Sergeant Rebecca Mercy to the position of Police Lieutenant effective August 31st, 2020. Lieutenant Mercy is a 17-year veteran of the Springfield Township Police Department and was recently evaluated through a written examination and oral interview conducted by State City Solutions LLC, and also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the Chief of Police. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Of Lieutenant Mercy, there will exist a vacancy as a police sergeant. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Corporal Nelson Whitney III to the position of Police Sergeant effective August 31st, 2020. Sergeant Whitney is a seven-year veteran of the Springfield Township Police Department and was evaluated for the permission through a written examination and oral interview conducted by State City Solutions LLC. Sergeant Whitney also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the Chief of Police. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
As a result of Sergeant Whitney's promotion, there will exist a vacancy as a police corporal. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners permit Police Officer Christopher Calhoun to the position of Police Corporal effective August 31st, 2020. Corporal Calhoun is a six-year veteran of the Springfield Township Police Department and was evaluated for the permission through a written examination and oral interview conducted by State City Solutions LLC. Corporal Calhoun also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the Chief of Police. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And one last thing before I finish. As the President stated earlier on July 1st, we interviewed nine officers for these three positions. And we have the pleasure of sitting in front of these ladies and gentlemen, asked them a lot of questions, and seeing them on a daily basis. And after that interview process, I would say that, you know, all of them were outstanding in their interviews. And we do have a outstanding leadership in our police department, and probably some of the finest officers in this county. And we should be proud of our police department because we do work real hard and make sure that the police do a great job in Springfield of protecting and serving our residents. So with that, I will conclude my report for the evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell.
Before you move on, Mr. President, may I make one comment?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to, first of all, I'm just very happy that we had the promotion of a female officer to lieutenant. And anyone that is watching this, well, this program or this recording, if they would please, we are encouraging females and minority applicants to please put in your application for these vacancies that are being filled, not only in Springfield Township, but also throughout Montgomery County. We would love to have more female and minority representation in our police force, to have our police force be more representative of the population and the demographics of Montgomery Township. So please, we encourage all minorities and female officers to please apply for these positions when they become available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Yep. And just as a note also, and I talked to Mike Taylor about this, these appointments will take effect at the end of August, which seems like a long time from now. And mainly the reason is we have a lot of movement within the police force, and what we're doing is breaking up some teams. And there are vacation schedules and that sort of thing. And when our Chief of Police, you know, worked with Mike to get through the scheduling, it just seemed that it wouldn't really work out that well until really the end of the summer. So what we tried to do is just streamline it so that everybody could have hit the floor running. So that's the reason why there seems to be such a delay between now and then. So that's that. Okay. So next, moving on, we will hear from our Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board Meeting scheduled for Monday, July 27th, has been canceled as no new petitions have been received. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning hearing board will be conducted on Monday, August 24th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, next we will move to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Tom Priz Belinski to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. The new three-year term of service shall expire July 13th, 2023. Ken Ferguson was also due to be reappointed to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Shade Tree Commission. However, Mr. Ferguson has indicated that his professional and personal obligations will prevent him from continuing as a member and decline the invitation to be reappointed. On behalf of the entire Board, I wish to thank Ken for volunteering his time and talents to the Springfield Township community over the past several years. There now presently exists one vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. The members of the Shade Tree Commission serve in an advisory capacity to the Board of Commissioners to promote the beautification of public spaces, to encourage good planning and landscaping of private spaces in the township. Members also organize and host the Township's annual Arbor Day event each spring, which we were sad to miss this year. If you are interested in serving on the Shade Tree Commission or any other advisory board or committee, the Board of Commissioners would like to hear from you. Please forward a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA 19038, or M. Taylor at SpringfieldMontco.org in order to be considered for an appointment. Of course, Mr. Taylor's information can also be found on our website very easily. So to reiterate, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Tom Priz Belinski to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Shade Tree Commission. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Please signify by saying aye, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Okay, well, that concludes the committee report. So now we will then go back to the public portion of the meeting, and the Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. And we've sort of dispensed with all the agenda items. So any questions that anybody would like to ask, feel free, I see Tom Cornelli has raised his hand. So, Mr. Cornelli, go ahead and ask away.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Do appreciate it. Yeah, so I wanted to bring your attention. First of all, my name's Tom Cornelli. I live at 533 Paper Mill Road. I've lived in the township for over 27 years, and I've lived on the 500 block of Paper Mill Road that entire time. One of the things I'd like to bring up to attention, and maybe we can talk about it at a future meeting, is reducing the speed limit on Paper Mill Road from the 600 block, the 200 block or 200 to 600, depending which way you're traveling, from 35 miles an hour, bring it down to 25. There are many reasons to do this, and most of them all revolve around safety. Number one is, and first and foremost, is that this is a residential street. It's not a state road anymore. It's, there's no commercial properties or anything like that. It is a residential street, like many other we have in Springfield Township. So it should be 25. We also have many families and small children that live on the street. Additionally, the street, as you can imagine, has many school-aged walkers, lots of children walking to school every day when school is in session. I have two children who are now, well, two adults now, 122 and 119, that, you know, hooked it to school for the better part of 13 years. But, you know, we had to really watch them very carefully on this street because it is quite a speedway at some point, especially during the rush hours. There's also, on the even side of Paper Mill Road, there are no sidewalks. There's also the, on the even side of Paper Mill Road, there are no sidewalks. And then, of course, we all have the fun with the hills and the turns on Paper Mill Road of many blind driveway exits. Yeah, we have a couple tricky intersections at Edan Road and Kingston That can get a little tricky pulling out when cars are doing in excess of the speed limit, thirty-five, which they tend to do quite often. And then similar, you know, our road is very similar to East Mill Road. It's East, East Valley Green Road, similar to Hawes Lane, it's similar to Orland Mill Road. All those roads have twenty-five mile an hour speed limits. And, you know, we're still trying to figure out, living on the street for twenty-seven years, why we have thirty-five. And then, you know, as you can imagine, more than thirty-five mile an hour speed limit street on a residential street, speeding is a huge problem on our street. You know, if people went thirty-five, they probably wouldn't even be talking to you. But people aren't going thirty-five, particularly In the rush hours. In the morning, they're, they're speeding up the hill to beat the light Church Road. And then they're coming home, people are coming home down the hill. It's not at all uncommon to see cars going Fifty, sixty mile an hour range, particularly delivery trucks. We see those industrial vehicles, the large dump trucks, and even, even Neighbors and residents that I know very well, I watch them and I go, they're going fifty miles an hour down the street. You know, so.
Was it me? Sure.
We've brought this issue up before, probably about three years ago. And I believe we have a couple folks, Sarah Lou John and Mary Thorpe are on. And a couple other folks I talked to, neighbors that cross the street that were Probably not going to be able to make it tonight, but are very interested in this because it's an issue on our block. It's an issue from the whole stretch of the road. It was brought up, like I said, three years ago. They did, you know, we, we did get white lines painted to create a shoulder of the road to narrow it down. And actually, I think that did help a little bit, but it's sort of back to, to, to a racetrack again. I think one of the things that was very interesting is when we were doing this Research, we discovered that when the road was turned over from the state to the township back, I, it's got to be twenty-plus years ago. The, the, the speed limit erroneously stayed at thirty-five and should have been moved to twenty-five. So, sort of like, we might have a chance to right a wrong here and bring this down to twenty-five. You know, so I'd like to bring it more to discussion, maybe future meetings. I did talk to Jim Lee about it, and I know he splits it sort of with you and, and Commissioner Graham too. Sort of, he's got one side of the road and, and Commissioner Lee has the other side. But, you know, I think it's still dangerous as ever. We've got lots of kids walk up and down the street and we did have a serious accident related to speed and reckless driving At five-twenty Paper Mill Road, just about a year ago, where cars ended up on the lawn, people were taken to the hospital. Lots of major damage. It was purely out of speed and reckless driving. So There are other lists of accidents that were done. So I think now might be a good time. We have some, some new folks on the board here and You know, I think it, you know, a new township management, I think it might be a great time to, to relook at this again.
Okay. Um, I don't have any problem with that. I, let me just sort of, just to Sort of refresh everybody's memory as to what happened before. And, and this isn't stating my opinion about whether this is a good thing or a bad thing or anything, but just, just to recap. We had discussions about this back in two thousand seventeen and we had a traffic study done in two thousand sixteen. And basically, there are what they call warrants and, and the, in order to change the speed limit PennDOT says that you have to, you have to meet certain warrants. And the warrants were that In order to reduce the speed limit by five miles an hour Speed limit has to be Going, this says the speed limit shall be within five miles per hour of the average eighty-fifth percentile speed or safe running speed. And they're saying that that, that didn't happen ever. Secondly, if, in order for a speed limit to be reduced by ten miles per hour or below Either a major portion of the highway has to have insufficient stopping distance If traveling at the eighty-fifth percentile speed Or corner sight distance on side roads is less than the necessary stopping sight distance, or A majority of crashes are related to excessive speed and the crash rate during a minimum Twelve-month period is greater than the high crash rate or crash severity rate. Those are the three Standards that they apply. Maybe, at least, maybe in number three, maybe that's changed. I don't know. I don't, maybe not the other two. Anyway, I'm not opposed to revisiting that and see what we can do. I know, you know, we were successful in reducing The speed limit on Willow Grove and people still complain about it. You know, I think people would just as soon Have, have no traffic on that road. But in any event, Why don't we see, why don't we follow up and see what we can do and You know, We'll, we'll just go from there.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, Bear, let me make a comment. So Tom had reached out to me and, you know, frankly, it hadn't occurred to me, I probably didn't even notice What this, what the speed limit was and I, you know, maybe I'd go thirty-six, who knows? But
Yeah.
But since he did, you know, and I pretty much drive on that every day, I started to Just think about it as I drove on it. I drove on it at twenty-five, I drove on it at thirty-five, just to kind of see what it felt. But it did Independently, I thought of, you know, he had mentioned a couple of the roads, but independently, I thought of East Mill Road. It's very, has a lot of similarities in that.
Yeah.
Some spots, there's no sidewalks, some spots it's wider than others, it's all residential.
Right.
There's a stop sign, you know, kind of right in the middle of it. And Mill Road probably is too. So it did seem very similar to that and
Yeah.
It's, it's a through street for a lot of people, just like Mill.
Right, so, yeah, I know what you mean. It's like, you're like speeding along and all of a sudden it kind of narrows down and all of a sudden it's, it's a whole different Sort of kettle of fish, right? Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a different feel. It's, it's just, it's more, it's more of a A neighborhood, like you feel like you're going through a neighborhood as opposed to like, it's not a throughway anymore. Yeah, right, yeah.
And that curve there, if you're coming from Church Road towards Eden, that curve, it does have a twenty-five sign, you know, for that curve.
Is that right?
Yeah. So it shouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't create that much of a different burden on a driver to be twenty-five a little bit before that and a little bit after that.
No, I don't think it should. No, I don't think it should.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that was in the report last time was they saw that The, the Edan Road pullout, and I'm sure many of you have probably pulled out there. They saw that as, as Not a difficult turn to make when they were doing the traffic study, but that was late in the, sort of the winter For the bushes are all grown in. And if you ever
Right.
Try that now and tell me that's not a blind curve, well, you must have a blind eye because
Yeah.
You know, it, it was definitely done at a time where I thought that the bushes were definitely not as obstructive as they are Probably nine months out of the year. So most folks are very familiar with that curve. It's, it's a doozy coming out there at Edan Road.
Right, yeah. Well, we have a new, we have a new, you know, traffic Enforcement officer in our township and, you know, you never know who's changed it at a, you know, PennDOT. So let's, let's revisit that and see where we go.
All right, great. Appreciate that, guys.
Yep, yep. Okay, any other questions? I see any hands. Glenn Shum has raised his hand.
Meeting you now, Glenn. Go ahead, Glenn.
Good evening, guys.
Hi, Glenn.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for, you know, having the faith in me to continue with the Civil Service Board.
Yeah, welcome back.
I appreciate the support.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thanks for
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too. Okay, anybody else? Must be somebody else. There's no baseball game on. Okay. No, well, I'll tell you what, in that case, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. How's that sound? Okay, any seconds?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, we are adjourned.